Hello and welcome to another episode of the Adrian Ross Show. I have a good show for you today. I actually have a guest I'm going to bring on in a moment. She's someone I know very well, but instead of us just kind of kicking back and laughing and shooting the breeze as we so often do, we actually have to get down and serious, down and deep about some serious, serious things going on concerning our children. And so I'm going to bring in Tia. Tia is a mother, but she's also a school board member in upstate New York. And that's the main reason I'm having her on today. So here we go. Tia, welcome to the Adrian Ross Show. I'm glad you could be on.
Hey, thanks for having me.
I'm glad you're here, but I already told the audience that usually when you and I catch up, we're laughing, we're joking, we're kind of kicking back. But today is more of a serious show and I'm sure that much of what we talk about isn't going to make a lot of people feel like laughing and joking because it's serious. We're going to be talking about children and talking about the sexualization of children in particular that we see in our culture, but in our school, which is really the weird thing. You know, it's just such a weird thing and I'm blown away not only that it exists, but how quickly we seem to have gotten to this point from looking at children as being innocent and people who need that innocence protected to people who are just pretty much, I think, thrown to the wolves. So I wanted you on the show, as I told the audience, because you are not only a mother who has children in school, but you're actually a school board member in upstate New York. So I gotta ask this, you're in education, even beyond the school board, your history of being in education, your husband is in education, you've always been involved with children, but I never pictured you as a person who would be running for the school board, you know? I just, I didn't. But when you said, you know, I'm gonna run for the school board, I gotta ask, first of all, how long have you been on the school board and what brought you to that decision?
Well, I've been on the school board for just a little over a year. And what brought me to this decision was actually COVID. As you know, New York is one of the most restricted states when COVID and in particular, our kids were out of school for about two.
I'm sorry, you cut out a little, the internet's a little bit choppy. So we're gonna make the best of it though, but how long have they been out of school, you said?
They were out of school for about two years.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, and so, and they started coming back to school and with the mask and then it became like an issue with the vaccine and sports and all of that stuff was taking place. I quickly learned that it was, decisions were being made from the school board. And so when I would have an issue or concern, I would go to the meetings and I would see a group of people make decisions that just didn't make sense. And it made me to think that either everyone is totally clueless or no one is willing to take the stand. And so I always tell my kids, be the change that you want to see. That's what I tell them all the time. So ran for the school board on the terms of that I would be one for the parent, always be transparent and to try to do what's best for the kids and make sense decisions regardless of what the norm is. And so that's why I ran and they welcomed me and I got the seat and now I'm there for three years.
So you'll be there for three, okay, okay. Tell us how old your children are.
Well, I have my oldest is graduated last year and then I have a
Graduated from high school.
From high school. I have a 15-year-old in a 10th grade. I have a 13-year-old in the 8th grade and then I have an 11-year-old in the 6th grade.
Okay, so please tell us, when you told your children that you were thinking about running for the school board, did you ask for their permission or did you just tell them and what was their reaction?
Like they didn't really care. I don't think they really understood what exactly the school board did. They knew I wasn't going to be in this. So they really didn't have a say or they're just like, oh. And they knew I was upset a lot of times about some of the restrictions. And they, they, they heard me run my mouth and so like I said, I always tell them, be the change. So I've just became an example for them.
Okay, good. All right. So into what we're going to be talking about today and that's, like I said, the sexualization of children. Have you had to take on any of that issue at all? As a school board member or maybe even as a parent?
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
As a school board member, even as a parent, have you had to take on the issue where you see the sexualization of children?
Not, not so much. I hadn't taken, I think
Say it again, you're gonna, say it again.
Not so much that I had to take it off. But I'm seeing, I think New York has been very crafty in the way that they are, they're not coming out and saying this is what you have to do, but through the recommended policies, it's like, this is what's gonna happen.
Hey, as you can tell, the internet is a little bit choppy, but I'm encouraging you to hang in there. It gets better. On the other end, looking back and I assure you, it gets better. So let's jump right in.
The New York State School Board Association and some of the recommended policies that they issue for school districts, it's kind, and which is usually the guidance that most use. Their policies are gearing up more towards more of an inclusion type policy and they kind of just as in, you know, we're just here for all students and it's under the guise of bullying, harassment and school safety. Those are the terms that parents hear, those are the terms that the public. Of course, everybody wants their kid to be included. Everybody wants your kid to be, nobody wants your kid to be bullied or harassed. And so these are, under these, these is when you begin to remove the layers from these procedures that are being recommended from the New York State School Board Association. To unpack and begin to see that there are these issues that are, that work that you're talking about now that will, will eventually, if they're not already, they will be, and they'll be covered under policy.
You say inclusion, are you, are you talking specifically also about the LGBTQ plus, I can't keep up with the alphabet? That there, that agenda?
Yes, I'm definitely, yeah. Because I mean, a lot of it is on versus the, what do we call marginalized groups in Title IX? So discrimination against sex, religion and, you know, gender and LGBTQ are included in that. And so if under Title IX. And this is how, you know, they're bringing law and policies into the school. It's almost as if districts almost have like their hands tied. They, it's coming in through recommendation and guidance from, well, I'm just from New York State. So this is, I can only give you what's happening in New York State. So this is where, how it's being brought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting because you was like, you were saying, you know, I can only speak for New York State, but I, I asked you on because I have been hearing about some things coming down from, actually from the World Health Organization and from, you know, commonly called the WHO and also from, also from the United Nations in which we're talking about some, some things that are going to affect a whole lot of states and even a whole lot of countries. And so I wanted to share a little bit with you. I want to read a little bit from, there's this, this site and I hope I'm pronouncing it right, but I don't know that I am. I believe it's out of Australia. It's called, it's called mercaturnet, mercaturnet.com. And again, forgive me if I'm, I'm pronouncing it wrong. But it's, it's, well, let me just, let me just read a little bit of it and get your reply, get your response and then we're going to get into some, some other stuff. And it says, this article says, "The World Health Organization has orchestrated a quote, 'framework for policymakers, educational and health authorities and specialists titled Standards for Sexuality Education in Europe.'" Now this is in Europe. "Its purpose is to standardize, in other words, override, the diverse teaching practices of each sovereign nation within Europe and the wider international community with regards to sexual education." Having all but forced European nations to comply, the United Nations is seeking to expand a similar framework to all UN member states, including Australia. And I'm assuming it says that because I believe this is in Australia, but obviously that would include the United States. It goes on to say, "This framework is called International Guidance on Sexuality Education, produced as part of UN Education 2030 and countersigned by UNICEF." The WHO are now actively promoting the framework. The World Health Organization, speaking of COVID, but anyway. "In mid-April of 2023, the Commission on Population and Development failed to reach a consensus on advancing the strategy, providing a reprieve for now." So for now, this is on hold because a consensus couldn't be reached, all right? But the whole thing, and we'll get into some of it, is about its design. It demands that sex education begin, Tia, at birth and be guided by the state via a relentless work of educators instead of the current model of parent-led development with catch-up assistance from schools. So here we have this situation where the WHO has this plan for Europe, right? Now the United Nations gets involved and we want to bring this here to all the UN states. Okay, that which is being pushed in Europe. Thank God, a consensus couldn't be reached. But no doubt, this is where they're trying to bring this thing from birth. And I gotta ask this, you may not have the answer, but I gotta ask you, what the heck? Like, why are we talking about sex from birth?
The only, this is just my opinion. Me, my opinion is they're trying to It's early.
Say it again?
I believe that they're trying to groom kids because if you expose kids to sexual activity, that's early age, that's basically grooming them. So that they will feel cool and that they won't be afraid or they're, I don't know, partners or that, I mean, that's the only issue that I could think of. That's just my opinion. And how is that helpful? I don't know.
Right, exactly. Yeah. And you know, you, you and I are both Christians and so we, we, we see things through that lens too. We know it's from the pit of hell. I mean, that's obvious, right? That's so, everything kind of, kind of falls under that, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to think. Like when I was reading some of the stuff I'm going to go through right now, I felt like I could, I felt like I could throw up. You know, and I, I love kids. I'm not a parent, never, other than, you know, teaching for nearly 20 years and, you know, I haven't had to bring any kid home, you know what I mean? But, but even, so even as a non-parent, it bothers me that this is where we are.
But I think another thing that's disturbing too is when you, you know, you worked I work in a school and when you see children that have been exposed at an age to sexual trauma, because it's trauma, these kids are successful in school, these kids struggle with anxiety, they struggle with self-identity issue, they struggle with depression, they, they have all of these innate fears. And yet this is what we're trying to expose young children to? It makes no sense.
No, it doesn't make sense. That's why there's, there's an agenda and the question is, what is that agenda? There are all different, there's, you know, what you shared, other people give their, their reasons for it and that they believe is under, underneath it, but let's just look. StopWorldControl.com has a page specifically dedicated to children and it's talking about this agenda and it quotes, says, "Schools must equip children to have sexual partners." It's, it's quoting the UN and the World Health Organization, the WHO. And it's, they're again, talking about sexualizing little children in primary education worldwide. And it says, this StopWorldControl.com says that it is, quote, "For the purpose of normalizing pedophilia." And I've heard other people say the same thing, that they truly believe that, that they're trying to normalize pedophilia. Is it to protect people who are guilty of pedophilia that's gonna have to pay a price?
But if you think about it, Adrian, I think the United States is probably the only country that does not allow like adults to marry young children, like you, other countries, other nations where that's allowed. And this is gonna be a worldwide thing. This is gonna, how you're gonna have to change the way Americans think to be conformed to the rest of the world because our countries, this is like, you know, this is not, not normal. Other countries and other nations that where older men are marrying 13 and 14, even younger, 10, 11, 12-year-old girls.
What's the benefit of that for us in America?
There's no benefit. It's not even a benefit for the other countries. Just seen as if we're looking at, you know, the United Nations and we're looking at the World Health it's, if they're trying to develop this one system, one world, a universal, whether it's universal healthcare, whether it's digital currency, a one-world government, then this is something that the United doesn't allow, that other countries do.
Now you, your background is in, correct me if I'm wrong, it's in, is it social work or is it counseling?
School counseling.
School counseling, okay. So I, going back to the grooming issue and the whole movement now, this whole transgender thing, where it's like, they're, they're even talking about, if you try to gear someone away from cutting off body parts, you know, at nine years old, then that's a form of abuse supposedly, you know? Was there not a time, or maybe I'm wrong, I mean, you're, you're younger than I am, but was there a time in your education and your experience where if a child said, "I'm not happy with who I am," you would try to counsel the child to be accepting? Do you, do you, or is it just like
I can't recall kids, when I went to high school, I don't ever recall so many people having so many gender issues. I don't, I mean, not that they're, you know, people that identified as being gay or lesbian. All of this, like I'm, I mean, people I know that are even lesbian, they know that their feet, you know, they're, you know, and they may, they may dress a different way, but at the end of the day, they, they still go by her and she and
You mean the real pronouns, the real ones?
Oh, this whole new, about, you know, everybody's so lost about who they are or what their identity. I didn't grow up like that.
And as a counselor, I, I just find it interesting, you made an interesting point because even, even gay people will tell you, they, you know, there are gay people tell you, they're not with that whole trans thing. Like you said, they know that they're a female, that they're a girl or boy or whatever. But now they're, they're, it just seems to me that we went from saying, if a kid comes to you and says, "I don't feel like I'm good enough, I'm being bullied." You know, it seems to me like we tell those kids, you know what, you are good enough. You are good enough. That's their problem. But why, we don't do that with the trans thing. With the trans thing, we, we essentially say, "You're not good enough, so let's change you."
Which is more confirming that you're not good enough.
That is my, that's what I'm saying.
It's just, yeah, it makes, it really, I think the, the moment that you with trans person, a trans person and says, "Yeah, I agree with you." You are, if you're a guy, you're, you are a girl, you're telling them that which I think is extremely damaging.
Absolutely. I wrote, I wrote a, a whole column about that, that it's, it is saying you're not good enough. And it seems to be the only thing where we, we want to tell them that they're not, that they're not good enough. All right. So I want to go back to this document here from StopWorldControl.com and I'll be sure to put some of these, these links in, in the show notes. But here, here's some, something here. This is a paraphrased summary of the official guidelines issued by the WHO, the World Health Organization and the United Nations to educational authorities worldwide. This is a paraphrased summary. It says, "Little children are sexual beings who must have sexual partners and begin with sex as soon as possible. For this reason, kindergarteners and elementary schools must teach children to develop lust and sexual desire, learn masturbation, build same-sex relationships, use online pornography and learn different sexual techniques such as oral sex." Again, what the hell? And I say that because that's where it's from.
Right.
Can you, I mean, you said you had kids who, some of that stuff, I don't even think a 15-year-old, you got kids with 15 or, right? I wouldn't even think that's for 15, 16, 17-year-old. Why is this in our schools?
I'm not, you know, and I think it's really sad because when you study human development and like the life cycle of a human being, you know already, like I said, that kids that are exposed to sex at age are, it's trauma. It is trauma to them. And, you know, and when you have a person that grows up with trauma as an adult, their whole development is affected by that traumatic experience. And it's because a young person's, not only is their, their physical body not ready, but their brain development is not ready to unpack all of the things that comes with sex. Adults can't even unpack it.
Listen, I'm about to say, I'm reading this, there's about, kids are ready to build sexual relationships. I'm like,
I mean, just like, like you said in the beginning, what exactly is the purpose? There cannot be real good reason for doing this. This is traumatic. And the only effect that is going to take place and is what we're seeing now. I think, you know, with the LGBTQ population, this has been the past has been the most that they've ever been celebrated and embraced. But what is the, what is the result for that? We see higher suicide. We see higher kids suffering with anxiety. It's medication. We see kids struggling in school. They're not being successful. They're not even being like, I hate to say, role models for other kids. They're
Yeah, absolutely. And when I think about, I think the world health, this is the World Health Organization, supposedly in the business of health. With this, God forbid, but it seems to me that with this would come higher teen pregnancy, would come higher diseases, sexually transmitted diseases with and, and we got the issue of abortion then because you've got the unwanted pregnancy?
Well, I mean, don't, well, according to New York, I mean, there's been some bills that legislation right now.
Actually, I'm gonna stop you for a second because you froze. So you, the last thing we heard was in New York?
In New York, there are bills and legislation right now that are looking to be able to give students medication for STDs and STIs, HPV vaccines, all kinds of things in school without consent, a parent, parental consent. So I guess if this is their agenda and implementing all of these things, I guess the school's response to that is, oh, we can take care of that in school too.
Right. It seems to me as if the government wants to take, wants to take over the role of the parent. We've been seeing that anyway, right? That's, all right. So let's look at this again. So I already said that it talks, it says again, "It aims to equip children to develop sexual relationships." Okay, it talks about equipping children with values that will empower them to realize respectful social and sexual relationships. And that these skills can, I'm quoting, "These skills can help children form relationships with sexual partners." Okay, "Help children and young people form respectful and helpful relationships with romantic or sexual partners." It talks about educators are instructed to teach little kids from the age of five about kissing, hugging, touching and sexual behaviors. Nine-year-old children are to be taught about masturbation, sexual attraction and sexual stimulation. That is in this, this document, this guidance that educational people are being given. Teach nine-year-old kids about masturbation, teach five-year-old kids about sex. Okay, so here's the deal. This is, they got this, they thought this, they know now. This is in the document, Standards for Sexual Education in Europe, which again, they're pushing worldwide. "Children between zero and four years must learn about masturbation and develop an interest in their own and others' bodies. Children between four and six years must learn about masturbation and be encouraged to express their sexual needs and wishes. Children between six and nine years must learn about sexual intercourse, online pornography, having a secret love and self-stimulation." Oh my goodness. "Children between nine and 12 should have their first sexual experience and learn to use online pornography." This ought to make us cry.
That's grooming.
That's grooming. I mean, I taught, I taught English. I know what it is to have curriculum you had to follow. This wasn't in it.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, okay, so there's a whole lot more, a whole lot more to it. Obviously you get the idea. I mean, they're, they're mapping out your first sexual experience. So if you don't, you know, I guess when you hit that age, that's your goal then, right? Because you're, you're told that by this age, you're supposed to have a sexual experience. So that's the goal, that's the aim. And then you're, you know.
That's at four?
Was that four, that was the nine? And nine, it's all a mess in my brain, it's all scrambling in my brain. But so now I gotta meet the standard. You know, as, as a kid, I can't just, I can't just be a kid, you know? I remember as a child, I loved to read, I would sit in my room too much and read. And then I was really big on television and my aunt Mary would be like, "Get your butt outside and play." You're a kid.
Right.
Until she didn't want me to play and then come back and talk, right? You know how that is with parents, right? But I was, you know, I just want kids to be kids, you know? But you're a school board member and how, how do you, like, have you had to stand, take a stand, whether it's this issue, LGBTQ issues or whatever is going on? Have you had to take a stand that maybe wasn't popular? How? Cause some people wouldn't even, they're just like, "I can't because I'm gonna tell somebody off or I can't because I, I, just too, too much for me." But you're in the thick of it. So what has that experience been like?
So I mean, like I said, I think, and learned what, as being in the school board, I've been learning that everything is done through policy. And so of course I quickly got on the policy committee. And, you know, and right when I was getting on, they were working on a new, I don't know. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's called the Diversity Equity Inclusion Policy, so it's the D E I policy. And uh, what I learned from that policy, and it, you know, they talk about a lot of great things, you know? We, we say things about, you know, everybody, nobody wants to talk against diversity. You know, um, they, they give examples of, um, you know, well, we want to make sure that there's books in the library that reflect the kids in our school district. And it gives the perfect example of, um, we need, you know, oh, they always want to throw in, black people need more black history books, and there needs to be more than just celebrating and learn about black people accomplishments, rather than just just black history, you know, they give all of those examples. But when you really begin to unpack the policy, it's about equal access. And these are the things that I started to question. And which was not questioned, and it, it's not popular, because it's about equal opportunities and, and it's about equal access. And so I began to ask, like, well, what is it that, who doesn't have access? Like, who is missing access, what are, what students are missing out on? What is it, are they missing out on academic access, what are they missing out? And what I came to the conclusion is that when you look at access, the only things that all students don't have access to is gender issues. So we're talking about locker rooms, we're talking about restrooms, and I think, I throw in there, we're talking about female sports teams. And so when I began to question about access to those things, you know, that was not favorable. And, you know, I'm, as a school board member, you know, I'm only one person, and so you, in order for things to get passed, the majority has to agree or disagree. Um, you know, but I thought that it was important to, you know, voice my opinion and my thoughts. And, you know, and make it clear that I'm not going to be willing to vote for anything that um, I feel that it jeopardizes other students or other students' rights.
Can you, can you be more specific though, when you say access, when you talk about restrooms and locker rooms, what exactly do you mean?
So um, if you are a male student, I just use this as an example, if you are a male student that identifies as female, um, then what bathroom would you use? And if, when we're looking at policies and talking about equal access, then you, according to the policies, you should be able to use whatever restroom or facility or locker room that you want. Wherever you, whatever you identify as. In which, that's something that, you know, and yet, and so we're making accommodations for one particular group. But what about that female student that feels uncomfortable when there's another male student in the bathroom that doesn't perceive that student as being female? What about their accommodation?
Because they're not. I mean, the children in this case know more than the adults.
Right.
So what about that? What's the answer to that question, according to policy?
Well, there's no clear answer. And this is where parents have to speak out. You know, parents have to make it known, they have to, and, and most importantly, like, I mean, like I, you know, I've been in the school, this is not something that's happened overnight, this has been going on for years. You know, I would say at least a good, I don't know, uh, ten years. This has been going on slowly and implementing slowly. And so, I mean, I've always told my kids from the beginning, like, this is what's going down, coming down the pipe. You know, and this is what's gonna happen, so if you in the bathroom and some other body in the, come in the bathroom, you get out of that bathroom. You know, and so, I mean, we've had conversations and, and it's, you know, I, you, you know, it's not like, and I'm not saying that, um, you know, trying to put fear into people um, about public school, but you better be talking to your school, your stu, your kids about what's happening in the real world and in, in a public school. Because if you're sending in there blind, if you're sending them there with the, the, the thought that they're gonna be trained and get values from whether teachers or from other students, you are sadly mistaken.
And you, and you know what, do you know that now, I just heard something the other day, that, I mean, it's not new, but I just was reminded the other day, that they're, they're telling kids not to tell their parents, like, you can come to, you know, there's someone else you can come to, you can talk about, talk to these things about the sexual stuff, the, you know, all, all this stuff, the grooming and all that. You can, you know, you can come to us and, and listen. Whenever they tell you, don't tell your parents.
Right.
That's a, that's a red flag and a half.
Right.
Yeah, well, so what happens, Kia, if in the district where your children go? If, um, you know, you, they come and they tell you, or you find out, a, as a board member or, or member of the community, that some of this stuff we just talked about in that guidance, the, the World Health Organization UN Guidance comes into play in their classroom, where they're starting to tell them, oh, you touch yourself, you masturbate, you gotta have sex, but, I mean, how do you handle that because you're on the board?
Um, well, first of all, it has to be, you know, what to our attention.
Right.
Um, you know, it's, it's, it's interesting, because, you know, we're, I, I live in a small community, it's not really that big. And so you do hear a lot of stuff, but um, I can't really, we, the board cannot respond if it's not brought to their attention, if that makes sense. And, and so that's why I'm saying, like, parents need, they need to get involved, they have to get involved. And, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna say though, that right now with what this, you know, I, I guess that there's, it's on hold now, right? But what I'm saying is there, the plan is that this thing will get through, so it wouldn't even be about bringing you to your attention at some point, it's just, it's just there. You know, and, and somebody's going to implement it at some point, if that's the case, so, I mean.
See, I mean, the only, the real, the only way, like, if something like that was to happen, it's gonna definitely be up to the state. And then it's gonna depend on who your governor is. It's gonna depend on your um, uh, Department of Education. And if the Department of Education says, this is what has, I mean, I even look at the health um, curriculum, the health curriculum that you and I had back in high school and junior high school, is totally not the same as it was. And, I mean, we've, um, there's a whole big, huge sexual component in the health curriculum. Um, right now in New York, state, um, students are mandatory, have to take health class in seventh grade and eleventh grade. Well, in high school, doesn't have to be eleventh grade, but it has to be done in seventh grade and then in the high school before they graduate. They need, they have to have health credits, and um, and so you're, the main thing when they're really, where students are really, right now, being taught about sex would be in the seventh grade. So what, you're like thirteen, no, twelve years old in the seventh grade. Um, that's probably the first time that you're gonna be, you're supposed to be talking about it as far as school. And it has changed tremendously. Um, and we have guest speakers that come in and talk about it. Um, Planned Parenthood has been a guest speaker, coming in and talking to kids about sex, and it's supposed to be their abstinence program. Um, but their parents need to know also is they have a right to opt out, right now, they have that right. So if you are concerned about your, your child learning from someone else, then you can opt them out of, um, you know, that section of health class. Uh, but parents don't know that. You know, and it's not like a letter is being sent home saying, hey, we're talking about sex in in school today, you know, you have an option, you know, not, I mean, some school districts may do that, but I don't think it's required. Um, so once again, it's that real reason why you need to be aware, you need to have that open communication with your kids. You need to prepare them ahead of time and give them the values and the morals that you want them to have versus relying on the school to give it to them.
Amen, amen. Listen, I remember as a kid, they would send a letter home, eat, when they were talking about like junior high, and they start talking about girls having their periods. And they had to, you could opt out. You know, because that was, you know, that was touchy. Alright, so I have to ask the hard question. And um, it pains me to even ask, because education is in my DNA, you know, being public school education. As a person who went to public school and taught in public school. How with everything that's going on, I mean, we talked about some things, but there's so much in the public school. And I know a lot of great public school teachers and educators, et cetera, but I still gotta ask, because it's off the hook. How, as a concerned parent, which you are, how do you deal with having your kids, how do you not scoop them up and drag them out of there?
Trust me, I've thought about it for a long time, um, especially with COVID. Like, when I, when COVID happened and I saw like what was being taught, how it was being taught. And even with um, just the curriculum, I'm like, and I just real, I just feel like the kids aren't really, not that they're not learning, but they're not really learning a lot. And so I, that was the first time that I ever thought about homeschooling, and my kids are so, they're very social. They like their friends, they like school.
Yeah.
Um, so taking them out of school would be, like, it, I think it would be harder for them. Um, because they, I mean, they like it, they like school.
Right.
But um, right now, some of these, we're talking about a lot of it, but it's not, um, it's not like the law. So if it ever becomes the law, and, you know, like I said, and I, and I talk to my kids a lot about it, because I know what's going on, so I tell them what we believe.
Yeah.
And how we're doing. And I don't have a problem sending an email, I don't have a problem telling the teacher that my kids are not gonna be a part of this. I don't have a problem saying, like, they're not studying this, or I don't have a problem going out.
Right.
So that's kind of what I do, I'm not like a helicopter mom, but I'm not also, you know, even some of the um, um, when they're talking about like the Greek gods. Some of the, the stuff that they're showing the kids, and, you know, it's kind of, it's almost, it's like it's against my religion, it's against my beliefs. You know, some of, to me, it's like, we're, we're, you're talking about demons and demonic activity and spiritual. Uh, this isn't just learning about another, this is against our beliefs. And so I wrote emails, and I don't let my kids do a certain, uh, you know, God with a little G, of Greek mythology and things like that, because I don't want them learning about that. So, um, I think, like, I, I just, I, I encourage, like I said, my kids like public school, they like school, they like to go to school. And so that's why we're there, but I do kind of secretly say, my youngest, I'm sure she probably won't graduate from public school. She's in sixth grade, it's happening fast, and I, you know, and I tell her all the time, I'm like, I'm sure you're probably not gonna graduate from public school.
Kia, it is so, it is so fast, like, I, I can't even believe where we are, you know? Um, back in the day when people would, would talk about sex education, for example, and other people would be like, ah, just leave that to, don't, you know, don't get your hands in there. Um, we, we, we would, people would say, well, if, if you go this route, next thing you know, they're gonna be doing this, and everybody's like, oh, you're over-exaggerating. And then look where we are, it wasn't an, an over-exaggeration at all, you know? Well, I'm glad that you and Larry are very involved, but I do worry about the parents who, who aren't, or the kids who have had, who have had trauma, sexual trauma and different things, or, or young kids who deal with, you know, figuring out their bodies and all this other stuff, and then you go into the classroom, you know? And then they're encouraging you to, to give yourself over to some of this stuff and paving that way for pedophilia and all that. That is, it absolutely, it's absolutely scary stuff. And um, and I just feel bad for kids who don't have those involved parents or don't have that church community, I think this is a conversation for the church too, think about it. The churches have to be, have to be teaching this stuff as well.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, so, um, well, uh, I, you know, I never would have guessed that I would have had, uh, an episode where I was talking about sexual education from zero, and which a guidance says specifically talks about zero age. Um, interesting, it even talks about Kia, and this is, this is important, even talks about using modern media. You know, um, with some of this stuff, they know what it takes to get to, to kids, you know? So, um, I, I think prayer is certainly, is something that we need to be engaged in. You know, for our kids', uh, education, knowing what's going on. But, but also what you're doing, and I want to thank you as we wind out that you willingly put yourself out there to be on the school board, like I said, I always knew, you, you know, you love kids, I always knew Larry loved kids, know you're into education and working with young people, but I never envisioned you being on the school board. But there you are, and I know you enough to know that you open in your mouth when you need to. So, so, um, your district is, is, whether they realize it or not, which I'm sure they do, they're blessed to have you on, and, and I'm thankful. Any, any final words before we say adios?
Um, I just, I, I, you know, you know me, I was not looking to be on this board, it was definitely a, a God thing. Um, but I do want to say, like, to anybody that's listening, it's, it's time to get involved. I'm glad that I did it, you know?
Yeah.
Um, but it is time, if we can't afford, we're not afforded to sit on the sidelines um, and be silent, we're not afforded to just come up with and say, oh, you know, the world is crazy, or, you know, we're living in the end times, and that's, this is it, and this is, you know, it's going down, and just sit back and do anything, and nothing about it. Um, you know, especially those that are believers, um, God is calling us to the frontline. And there's no better place to be, is to be in the frontline of protecting our children, because they are gonna be the one that leads. And so what we are pouring into them, and when they see, I, I, you know, my kids don't go out and be like, oh, mom, I'm so proud of you, but they're watching.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I, they watch me run my mouth, as they say it. And they, they watch me complain, and they watch me, um, have all these ideas and these thoughts, and then they also watch me do something about it, which is powerful. And so we need to lead by examples, and we need to be that voice for our kids when they don't know what to do or know what to say, and so it is definitely time, whether you're running for the school board, whether you're running to, whether you work in the school, whether you're volunteering, it's time to get involved. And it's time that we put up a fuss and stand for our kids and stand for what's right and stand for righteousness.
Amen, amen. Well, that's a good way to end the show, and I thank you, thank you for all that you shared. And I especially thank you for those powerful last words, and I, I pray that we all, myself included, take that to heart. Thank you so much, Kia, for being on the Adrian Ross Show.
Thank you.
Well, I told you that this was going to be a rather deep conversation with Kia, a mother, a school board member, an educator, and, and it was, and it's something that we should all be concerned about and mindful of. And I encourage you to take to heart what she said at the end about knowing what's going on and about getting involved. It's so important, our children deserve to be protected. And there is an agenda that seeks to snuff the innocence out of them in such an astronomical way. So thank you for tuning into this episode of the Adrian Ross Show, and once again, as I always say, please go to the BMGNetwork.com and check out the other podcasts there, we are engaging, enlightening, informative, and even entertaining. And also, please go to my Substack, that's AdrianRoss.substack.com. I have my columns and this podcast all there on that platform. Please subscribe, check out the various subscription options, I would love your support. AdrianRoss.substack.com, go to a major podcast platform and follow there, leave a rating and a review. And of course, we're also on YouTube at the Adrian Ross Show. So thank you again for tuning in, and I will catch you the next time, God bless you, a month.